Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, August 15th, 2022. The first matter we have on the agenda is the approval of the July 18th, 2022 minutes. Any board members have any comments or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that we're approving the amended minutes where I had provided a revision under the 50 went with AV petition under discussion and making sure the other board members are aware of that language change. This is G. Frichette referred to the ZBA's approval specifically conditioning that the garage would not be converted into a residential dwelling and neighbors expressed concern that it would. So I just wanted to have that in the paragraph and add some context into the next comment that's in that paragraph. If that's agreeable to everybody, I would make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion with those amendments.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded, amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote chair.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. This evening, we have three public hearings, an extension and a pre-application. The first public hearing is a public shade tree hearing for 7 Ruth Street. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one public shade tree located at the above address. The tree is causing sidewalk panels to lift and may be causing damage to a sewer connection. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name's Mark Byrne. I'm the interim commissioner of Public Works and I'm here before you tonight in regards to 7 Ruth Street. Myself and the tree foreman looked at this tree several times and unfortunately, before here, before you tonight, it is a healthy tree, but what's causing problems is the rooting of the trees causing problems that are getting into their sewer line and they're also causing problems on their roof areas, damaging their roof, and it's causing sidewalk uprooting, causing safety issues amongst the neighbors. So our request is to remove the tree and plant another tree nearby and repair the sidewalks and hopefully we can relieve the resident of this issue at 7 Ruth Street. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else like to speak in regards to the tree hearing?
Exactly what you said.
Just have your name and address for the record and then ditto.
Ryan. I live at 7 Ruth Street, okay, and we do have a problem. And he brought up everything I would have said about my roof. The roof is a new roof and it's got all peat moss on it and everything else. I mean, it's causing a lot of damage. So I'm with him.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in regards to the tree hearing? Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? This time, I'll turn it over to any board members. Any board members have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I don't. I went out there to look at it as well and actually, it's a danger the way it's lifted the walk. It caused me to look at some of the other trees. I'm surprised that there aren't more problems out there, but it just happens the way the root system is running through that from that tree to the 7 Ruth Street. So obviously, I would be in favor of the removal of the tree.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the removal of the tree.
Caleb, any questions? We have a motion by Mr. -- no, I don't have any questions. Bob, you on Zoom? You have any questions?
Not at all.
No? We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Lockhart. Yeah, I was here today as well and I'm total in agreement to have the tree removed and replanted somewhere else in the neighborhood. So I'll second that motion. So we have a motion on the floor to approve, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries. Good luck. We wish you well. Good luck, sir. Wish you well. Next matter we have is a site plan review for 642 Gorham Street. Steven Crowley has applied to Lowell Planning Board for the site plan review approval to convert a 10-unit building at the above address into 11-unit building. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval pursuant to Section 11.4.2 from the Lowell Planning Board. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Norberto Leon and I'm the architect for the project and I'm here with Steven Crowley, the owner of the building.
Hello.
So we are proposing to convert the existing retail space in the building to a residential unit and the unit will have three bedrooms. And we are not going to be able to provide parking because the site does not allow for any kind of parking spaces. When the building was built, there was no parking spaces either. We have 10 units right now in the building, so this will be the 11th residential unit in the building.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything you want to add, sir?
Just that it is right near the Gallagher Terminal train station. I mean, I do have 10 families in there and I probably, I think only one or two of them have vehicles, not that that makes a difference like with the whole neighborhood, but parking, whenever I go over there to do any work, it's never been an issue. They understand that the street is what it is. There's plenty of parking in that area around the street.
So do you get more people parking on Gorham Street or Central Street?
Central, whatever's available, but Central.
Because that intersection heading towards, it can get a little converted.
Heading towards Frank and Ernie's. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody like to speak in favor of this project on 642 Gorham Street? Anybody else in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at this time. Anybody in opposition to this for 642 Gorham Street? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none at this point in time. I'll turn it over to the board members. Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment that, matter of fact, will probably generate fewer cars than the church that was there before. And there's no exterior change to the building whatsoever. It, based on our zoning ordinance, it is within proximity to Gallagher Terminal. So I just, I think that's, I think that suffices. And there's not a lot. From an exterior perspective, there's really no change. I just think it's unfortunate to the owner and it's a trend I'm seeing across the city even from my day job providing financing, is that there's not a lot of opportunity and money in renting to retail space, unfortunately. And residential seems to be easier to rent and actually getting more monthly rents. It just seems to be kind of a trend that what we're seeing, especially in the downtown area, which obviously is not preferable in the mixed-use districts, but it really is kind of the sign of the times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart, any questions?
I have no questions.
No? Caleb, any questions?
I agree with Mr. Fischette that the parking is what it is and is close to the train stations, so I wouldn't have a problem with that either. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Caleb. Bob, you have any questions?
Yeah, I agree with everyone. I think it's better to have residential there, especially a three-bedroom unit, which is hard to find in Lowell. So I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. So this was a request for a site plan. Let's request to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 242 Gorham Street.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote chair. Any opposition? Hearing none. The site plan is approved. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Moving along on the agenda, the next matter is a site plan review and a special permit for 14 Macamata Street. ReShape Macamata LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to redevelop an existing structure at the above address into 13 residences in one approximate 550-square-foot commercial space. The property is located in the Neighborhood Business zoning district and requires site plan review amendment under Section 11.4.2.2 to redevelop the building into more than three dwelling units. A special permit approval under Section 12.1E for the proposed use and under Section 6.1.6 to utilize publicly-owned garage for parking. May we hear the applicant, from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing ReShape McIntyre LLC and with me tonight is the principal, Leo Montero. We also have Matt Hammer of Landplex Engineering, the engineer for the project. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking an amendment to the site plan that was approved by this board on June 28th, 2021, a little bit over a year ago. We're also seeking a special permit pursuant to 12.1E in order to redevelop this property located at 14 McIntyre Street into 13 residential units and one commercial unit. 14 McIntyre Street currently consists of approximately 8,303 square feet of land with a vacant three-story building, which was most recently occupied by a church but has been vacant for quite some time now. Property is located in the Neighborhood Business District and adjacent to the Urban Mixed-Use District. I believe the materials that we've provided to the board in advance of this hearing, including the applications, plans, and especially the narrative, provide a thorough explanation of how this proposal meets the criteria for issuance of the special permit. Nevertheless, I'll take a few minutes and run through the summary of the project and then Matt will review the engineering comments and go through the site plan and Leo will review the architectural aspects of the project. I should also point out that this project was vetted thoroughly with the department heads. We had two or three different meetings and we have incorporated a lot of suggestions into our final plans that we're proposing here tonight. Before the Zoning Board of Appeals last Monday, at that hearing, we were requesting relief for lot area per dwelling unit, floor area ratio, height of the building, landscape, open space, and parking. We received variances for all the variances we were requesting. The variances were issued with three conditions. The first condition being that the applicant contact DCR and request that street trees be planted along the Marshall Street sidewalk, the new sidewalk that was recently installed by the developer of the condominiums. And once those trees are planted, the applicants agreed to maintain the trees over time. Second condition was that there be a six-month administrative review once the certificate of occupancy issues for this building in order to ensure that the parking on the site is under control. And the third condition was that the applicant recessed the garage by approximately a foot and a half in order to account for better sight lines while exiting the garage. So the applicant agreed to all of those variances and the variances were issued. The neighborhood that the property lies within is an eclectic mix of single and multifamily properties with some neighborhood business scattered about. McIntyre Street is a short, narrow street running from Middlesex Street up to Marshall Street with little vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The applicant purchased the property a few months ago and is proposing to repurpose the property from its most recent use as a church to 13 residential units and one commercial unit. The residential units will include two one-bedroom units and 11 two-bedroom units. The commercial space on the first floor will be used by Leo's property management firm, which will allow for the property to have an onsite property manager. That property management will also service Leo's other properties within the city and outside the city as well. Leo has been before this board several times in his efforts to do his part to revitalize the city and most recently for two critically important projects in the city at 62 and 80 Gorham Street. He was approved by both this board and the zoning board for those projects. Those projects are well underway and will eventually make a tremendous impact to that Gorham Street neighborhood. And I say that to point out that Leo has an excellent reputation within the city with the department heads, with the boards that he works with. He is known to work collaboratively with the city. I think in terms of reviewing the details of the proposal, it's probably best to just review the summary of the comments as those comments touch on all the important aspects of the project. So comment number one really just summarizes the scope of the project, which I've gone through a couple of times now. We're proposing 13 residential units, two one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, and commercial space on the first floor for Leo's property management company. Comment number two notes that we need to amend the site plan, which we're requesting tonight from this board. This property, if the board recalls, was a part of a larger parcel which was subdivided back in about a year ago. The other parcel was developed into six townhouse condominiums, which are completely developed and as part of that development, the site work was all built out. So the pavement was done, the drainage is in place, the new sidewalk was installed on Marshall Street along with new curbing. So that is all in place and it's a tremendous benefit to the neighborhood. And as the chairman mentioned, we also are seeking the special permit tonight pursuant to 12.1E. Comment number three, the site does not have, speaks to lack of sufficient snow storage area. This site does not have enough snow storage area for any larger storm, but as is the case with any site, if the site can't handle the snow, it has to be removed and the applicant's prepared to do that. Comment number four, the applicant is proposing to provide private trash and recycling through the garage area. There will be in the form of rollout dumpsters that will be picked up on a scheduled plan. Comment number five, and we'll also revise the site plan, the interior floor plans to show that within the garage area. Comment number five speaks to the proposed four parking spaces in the garage. The applicant did do a sweat path analysis showing the movements in and out of the parking garage. Cars can maneuver safely in and out. In addition, the applicant's provided for an alert system on the outside of the building, so anytime a car is exiting the garage, that alert system will go off. It will alert any pedestrian or motorist passing by that there's a car exiting the garage. It's very similar to what you would see in a downtown Boston garage when you exit a garage out onto the public right-of-way. Comment number six speaks to the, mentions that there are utility, there are easements for both this parcel, 14 McIntyre Street, and the condominium parcel, which is on Marshall Street. Those easements are cross easements. They're in place in order to define the relationship between the two parcels. Comment number seven, as part of the condition of approval from the ZBA, the applicant has agreed to request trees from the DCR, as I had previously mentioned, and once those trees are in place, the applicant will maintain the trees. So the goal here is to alleviate some of the ill effects of the significant urban heat island that's present in the Lowell Highlands. That was a suggestion of one of the ZBA board members and we're happy to accommodate that. Comment number eight and nine speaks to the off-street parking. So this project requires 28 off-street parking spaces. We can provide 15 spaces onsite. The zoning, the ZBA granted the parking relief that we were requesting last week. When we submitted this application to this board and to the ZBA, we had thought that we were going to be able to fulfill our parking obligations pursuant to 6.1.6 by way of having a commitment from the LRTA Gallagher Garage. As it turns out, I believe we circulated that letter. The letter's not a commitment at all. It's just an indication that there's available parking at that garage, much like the letter would get from Mr. Ryan, the parking director in the city, when we're developing downtown residential units. So we don't have a commitment for parking spaces, but we were granted relief for the parking that we need from the ZBA. We still feel that there's an opportunity to get some off-hour parking commitment from the LRTA garage and we'll continue to pursue that. And finally, so the design planner comments are favorable and point out that the proposal to repurpose this unsightly building will fill the gap for missing middle housing within the city. She goes on to note that the project will benefit from the nearby parks as a result of the location of the property and its conveniently, its access to public transportation is convenient based on its location. Last paragraph from the design planner speaks to a more detailed landscape plan. Again, we don't have a lot of open space here and can't provide much landscape open space at all, but we have agreed to work with the city as best we can to make the best out of what we do have for open space. And again, we're going to request the DCR plant those trees on Marshall Street and so that should help out that corner significantly, help beautify that corner. So that's all I have for now. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Matt and he'll go through the site plan and the engineering comments. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering, 10 George Street in Lowell. So the parcel of land is here, located along Marshall Street and McIntyre Street. As you recall, the planning board issued a permit for the construction of these six units here, as well as the parking amenities, drainage sewer, and the sidewalk improvements along Marshall Street. That part of the project has been subdivided off. So there's two parcels. There's a lot here, which is called Lot B, and a lot here, which is Lot A, which has the existing building, which was previously a church, that was left severed out of the entire parcel. With it are cross easements, as attorney Gary had noted, as well as all the parking spaces necessary that could be fit within this area. The parking spaces for this existing building here are shown on this plan as the parcel, as the lot identifications for Lot A, and those are shown here. Additionally, this building at one time had a garage in the building itself. And if you go down McIntyre Street, you can see where the garage was once located. And the developer wants to basically repurpose that existing garage area and provide an additional four parking spaces. Now with that comes some challenges. Those challenges are essentially the only way to get out of the parking garage is to back out. So with that, as attorney Gary had indicated, there's going to be a visual alert system that'll be affixed to the outside of the building, which is essentially a strobe and a beeping that would occur so that folks coming down or up McIntyre Street would see that visual alert system. And then that would have, that would indicate to those folks going up and down McIntyre that there's going to be a car exiting and I think we'll find over time, when people are accustomed to this system, that'll be easier to use for the folks navigating their way down McIntyre, as well as the folks coming out of this parking area. And I should also note that these parking spaces are going to be for compact cars, so there won't be any larger vehicles be able to be utilizing these spaces because of the tight confines of backing out onto McIntyre Street. One of the comments that came from the Department of Planning and Development was, you know, how do the cars get in and out of the garage? And this is a red line sweat path analysis that we're able to do with the software that we have to show how vehicles are going to come in and out of the garage. And I can hand one of these out to each one of you.
Was it this one that we see there?
Oh, you have it.
Yeah. Didn't understand it completely, but we have it.
Basically, what this shows is that if you're in a car coming out of the most restrictive spot, how that car can maneuver back out onto the road and exit. Conversely, it shows how a vehicle can also go in. So this is showing how it would back up to go down McIntyre Street. This was showing how you could back up and then go up McIntyre Street. And it shows two different types of vehicles, a regular sedan and a compact vehicle. It shows the two different types, but to show that it can actually work. During the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, one of the comments came up, you know, to improve the vehicle maneuverability, we're going to recess in the actual garage two feet. So that gives more area for someone to have, to be able to navigate themselves onto McIntyre Street. One of the other aspects of McIntyre Street is there's no sidewalk on this side here, so we don't have to worry about a sidewalk and a pedestrian interfering with that maneuverability either. These are the architectural drawings and I'll have Leo Montero walk through the architectural nature of the drawings themselves.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Leo Montero. I am the manager for ReShape McIntyre, also the building owner and the project developer. As John mentioned, I have acquired the property a couple of months back. The existing building is a existing CMU, concrete masonry unit building comprising of two stories with a gable roof. We are proposing to cut the roof off and build the structure as proposed to obviously increase the number of rental units, market rent units. And as John mentioned, it is my intention to move in my company, my business, to the city so it can be centrally located to manage the properties that I already have stabilized and developed in the city, as well as the units that I am finishing on 80 Gorham Street and as well as 62 Gorham Street. As John mentioned, those projects are well underway. We are anticipating to be finishing 62 Gorham Street by the end of the year and by next spring, wrapping up 80 Gorham Street. So there is a real need for me, for my company, to be centrally located. We have designed the space in a way where I will have a small office for, you know, key personnel, as well as a small garage/shop for, you know, small tools and equipment, even the stuff necessary to maintain this very property. It is our intention, as well as mentioned, to convert back the garage. We are willing to put the resources into that, as Matt has mentioned. Complete. Complete redo of the exterior, complete redo of all mechanicals. I did mention to the ZBA board that it is my intention for these units to be 100% electric. I was able to achieve that, to achieve this at my Gorham Street projects. All those 17 units that this board has approved will be 100% electric, and we are making a big push for the commercial spaces to be 100% electric. So it was a big effort between myself, the city, the electrical inspector, as well as National Grid. So we were able to figure out the equation, and we'll be able to provide, you know, carbon free building, hopefully, at those locations. And it is my intent for this location as well, using state-of-the-art ultra-efficient heat pumps for heating, as well as hot water. I currently manage, own and manage properties with said technology, and I do get amazing feedback from the tenants on how comfortable the units are, not only in the winter, but as well in the summer, and how favorable the, the efficiency is, and obviously their electric bill at the end of the month. So I'm available for questions, and I appreciate your time and the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So hopefully, that gives the board a pretty good overview of what we're proposing here tonight. Leo is, is proposing to invest approximately $3 million into this project, which will significantly enhance the character of the neighborhood. It, the project aligns with the goals of the master plan and sustainable Lowell 2025 by providing much-needed housing to the city. And as Leo mentioned, this is 100% electric property, which means that there's no carbon footprint. The effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. The effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the city or the neighborhood, and we hope that this board approves the request for the amended site plan and the special permit tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions of the board members or the public, if there be any. Thank you.
So counsel, as I understand, so you're only looking for the one special permit because when you look for the off-street parking, you didn't get that from the garage, but you got it from the ZBA.
That's correct.
So I'm just going through the memo that we received from planning staff, and when I read the notice, it mentioned the two special permits. But so at this time, you only need the one because you satisfied the pocket at the ZBA level?
Correct, pursuant to 12.1E is the special permit.
Okay, so basically, okay, I just want to check back, basically, as everybody understands, they could just put a site plan in the special permit. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody else in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? Let me see. I did be, I did receive a letter from staff today, addressed to the city council, but I guess I'll read it. Dear Lowell City Council, residents surrounding 14 McIntyre Street have come to the agreement to voice our concerns regarding the proposal to renovate 14 McIntyre Street into potential 13 residence units. Some of the concerns are listed below. Increase of traffic at the area with construction equipment vehicles and blocking of driveway. Loss of limited parking spaces, not available for the entire neighborhood during and after construction. Increase of construction noise, loss of privacy during construction, snow removal if a large storm hits the area, there'll be no spot to place snow, trash removal, big dump trucks cannot drive into 14 McIntyre Street parking lot in exit without potentially hitting parked cars. Construction may prevent residents from parking in parking spots. McIntyre Street must remain a two-way street due to winter conditions that may occur. An increase of 13 residents will make the area noisy, increase traffic for people, and less privacy. Residents of 11 McIntyre Street, concerns below. Increase of noise during the day and weekends, residents work second shift. Construction work vehicles, blocking of driveway and garage making it difficult to leave or arrive for work, school, et cetera. Please no scaffold to be placed in front of 11 McIntyre home during construction. Increase of height in building will block sunlight, loss of privacy if building windows can look into or dorm into the bedrooms of 11 McIntyre Street. Increase of vehicles in neighborhood and street leaving in and out of 14 McIntyre Street parking lot. We ask that the planned parking garage door does get built in front of our garage. You should not have to move our cars in our parking spot if construction is occurring. Trash removal, large dump trucks may hit our parked cars if turning into or exiting 14 McIntyre Street parking lot. The street and entrance are too small to handle large commercial vehicles. Increase of 13 residents will be too much for the area as it's already crowded. Snow removal is difficult during the wintertime. We ask that our lives do not get hugely impacted by construction. We should not have to worry about our cars being parked in front of our house or how we are going to exit or arrive home during construction. It does not prevent us from being late for work or school due to vehicles on the street. Then it says residents signed at Marshall and McIntyre. Some of the signatures I can't make out, some I'll try to make out. Alan Price, I can read his, nice. It looks like 11 opposition submitted 88. Gary, might be Glenn, I'm not sure. And then it looks like Rivera Dorck on a Van Dorck. Terry, I can't read out the other names. Sprague, Speng. So that was the letter that we received. Usually, most of the time, people sign it, print their name down below and give us, give us their address. And then they just showed the pictures for everybody else for the street. I don't know if you had an opportunity to see this, counsel, or not.
I did not, no. Who's that from, Mr. Chairman?
If you don't mind, Matt, it appears to be your neighbors.
I can tell you that the neighbors-
That was submitted-
We got that today.
No, that was submitted by the people from the meeting, the ZBA meeting last week.
Yes.
And that's just a copy of what they gave them.
Okay, so, so they did submit something to the ZBA last week, and they were, there were some neighbors here that were, last week at the ZBA meeting, that opposed, that, that were opposing this project. So their concerns were heard at that meeting, and as, you know, as the letter indicates you, those are their concerns. But I think, I think one of their misunderstandings is that they were blaming or sort of putting blame on, on this developer, Leo, for the, for what the developer of the, how the developer of the condominiums worked at the site. Leo is, I think that they'll, I know that they'll be very satisfied with how Leo manages the construction of this site. So he was sort of being blamed for, for work that was done by the other site, and that's not going to happen during the construction of this project.
We can understand if someone had problems with something next door, they don't want it to duplicate. I understand.
Yeah.
I can understand someone's concern. Doesn't mean it's going to happen again, but-
Right.
I mean, if something happened next door, you're like, well, what's the guy the other side's going to do to me?
Absolutely. It's only natural.
Yeah. And I think a lot of it was, was construction, which is regulated by, times by the city as well. Okay. So I read that letter, so record, is anybody on, if anybody on Zoom want to speak, if anybody in public want to speak on this 14 McIntyre Street?
I was like-
Do you have a question, Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something related to that comment, because I was involved with the original construction in the way that when the site was originally developed for the townhouses, they had to rip up the whole interior. There was a deep excavation in there. They really had limited access within the site itself in order to stage construction vehicles and things of that nature. So now that the site's constructed, and there's all this space allocated to Lot A, that you're going to find that a lot of the construction vehicles are going to come right into those spots within the development itself in order to stage themselves there to have access to the building, instead of using the nearby streets, which were only available-
You can have that if you want. Can you give me, I have another copy of that, you can have that if you like.
Thank you.
Which were only available when they were constructing those townhouses. So I think it's going to greatly improve because of the interior accessibility for the Lot A building redevelopment. So just so you make a note of that.
Okay. So anybody else want to speak? Nobody else at this time? I'm going to turn over to the board members. But before I turn over to the board members, I just have a quick question. So we talked about the garage door coming out, so I guess you're going to move it back and improve the sightline, right? So another question would be is, I know McIntyre Street's kind of narrow, so what's the plan when the city plows McIntyre Street? How's that going to affect your garage door? I mean, you know, because usually they go up one side, or, I'm not sure if they go up one, come down the other, because the street's narrow, or they just go up one side, or they come down the other side and push it all in front of the garage door, and then who tries to get out?
That is correct. We will be maintaining that side of the building. As mentioned, we are going to be on-site, 24-hour property management. Our main shop or main operations will be there. So we will be maintaining not only the clearing for the garage door, the garage doors, but also the turning lanes, the sweat paths.
Yeah. Because I'm saying you have to keep that clear from that snow, nothing's getting in, you know what I mean?
Right.
And as you know, once that snow pile gets there, if it freezes, it makes a lot out of, that's my own experience, a lot of people have done, you know?
And-
Sooner you get out there, the better off you are, depending on the weather.
Correct. And the way I see it, it comes with the territory and developing and, you know, dense urban areas. So we are, we're going to have to figure out a plan. I do own and manage a property, you know, five, 10 minutes away from there, 118 Middlesex Street, which it's a sizable corner lot, which I have a good-sized area behind the dumpster that I could, you know, bring, you know, my snow from McIntyre to there as well. So I have kind of figured that out as well. I'd like to clear up one comment regarding the windows. We did, that kind of came up as well during the ZBA. And if you look at the architectural plans, the neighbors did, you know, brought up privacy, which is absolutely a great concern. But the, there are existing windows on the second floor, so that already look down to her bedroom windows. The windows there we're adding on the third, on, on the floor above, they're going to be in the hallway. And then the windows on the floor on top are going to be so high, it is going to be impossible for you to see inside the bedroom. So we did kind of clarify that to, to the neighbors, because I wasn't sure if they could really see what was going on in the interior layout of the building. But that was taken into account as well, where we placed our windows, et cetera.
The angle in the fourth coming down here would be such a degree that-
Such a degree, yes.
-you have much visibility through the window.
Correct. And that point was made by one of the more members, who was the architect as well. And the sun as well, you know, the, the path of the sun, the way our building is positioned, it should not add or decrease any natural light for her, for the neighbors. And I did also brought up to board, and I wanted to be on record, that I am willing to work with them on sensitive timelines, sensitive dates, to, to do what I can to make sure that I am disturbing them the least amount, the least amount, amount of time possible. Certain trades that I can control, I could schedule them at a later time. Currently, I have been doing this at Gorham Street, in, in, you know, in order to be respectful to the neighbors, at 92 Gorham Street, because we're literally, you know, six feet apart, and people are sleeping, and we just poured a foundation there. So there was this whole operations, making sure that we're starting at a, at a time where it's comfortable for the neighbor, for the neighbors as well. So I am willing to do that for them. I did, you know, speak to that as well. I'd like to do that here as well. You know, the trades that I can control, obviously, you know, National Grid, you know, the city of Lowell, any emergency work, I don't control. It might be overnight, you know, it is what it is. But what we can control during our process, we're more than willing to be accommodate, accommodating to the neighbors as well.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions, comments?
I have a question and a comment, Mr. Chairman. There's a memorandum from Francesca, or from Joe Cady, the city engineer, to her, to the number of items and concerns and questions. Are you familiar with that? Have you had follow-up meetings with him to satisfy his-
Well, we received the comments on August 4th.
August 4th, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've read through all of the comments. We have no issue with the comments. You know, for instance, where he makes a comment where, you know, there's an overhang coming over the sidewalk, we'd be petitioning the city council for that as well, for that overhang.
License.
For that license to have an overhang over the, the city right-of-way. But all the other engineering comments are standard issues that we would address, and you could condition.
It looks like some of them are just, they want marked differently on your plans as well, is that what it is, Matt, on some of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, somebody just said something doesn't match, I'm pleased, advised, please straighten, yeah.
Right. So there's nothing in those comments that I feel is materially going to change the site plan at all.
We had a question about a handicap parking spot.
Right.
Again, we, we looked at that comment, we felt as though that comment's specifically under the jurisdiction of the building commissioner.
Okay.
If the building commissioner feels as though the commercial aspect of the building requires a handicap space, then we would have to accommodate for that. But it's our understanding that we feel as though it may not be required for this project. But again, all the permits necessary for the building permit, that would fall underneath, in my opinion.
Matt, just while on the subject of that, it did mention on the plans, though, it talked about the, the slope of the roadway versus the garage door, where the renderings showed on a flat. It makes it look like it comes down and then it flattens out.
So that's where the two-foot recess came into the condition of the zoning board of appeals decision on the variances, to add some additional depth to the garage to help with that slope when you come out.
So that's where you're going to make up that difference?
Yeah, you're able to make that up. We're not going to change the slope of McIntyre Street.
Right, right.
It's just going to enable the transition from that slope coming into the garage more attainable by adding that two feet. It's just like any road that comes into an existing road, you can't change the slope of the road, but you can help with the area coming and approaching that road by adding some, you know, in this case, two more feet in order to transition to that slope.
Right. But to their point, to the engineer's point, the rendering made it look like the road was a little off at that point, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a misrepresentation on, there's an architectural elevation. I don't know if you've seen it?
Yes, yes, yeah, actually, right. Oh, yeah, convenient slope, let me say, yeah.
So this is not actually a convenient slope. So when the slope goes by the garage, is going to be the ability to help with that transition coming out onto McIntyre by getting another two feet of slope in order to help with the severity of the slope coming out.
Anything further on that, Mr. Lockhart? Any other question?
I just want to make a comment. I'm not opposed to the project. I think it really challenged the density of housing over there and being able to control parking and traffic and everything. You have a little bit more work and plot, I think.
As far as the parking goes, I think with, you know, the close proximity to the Gallagher Garage at the LRTA, and there's a, there's another garage under construction right now near the Judicial Center. So I don't think parking is going to be a problem. Anybody that needs to, to park offsite will have a place to go.
I'm sure, you know, I'm really reacting to the, the, all the signatures on this sheet, because I think you've seen people that are opposed.
Yeah.
You know, they're looking at density, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I understand their concern.
Yeah, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions, comments? Caleb, any question?
So on parking, I, I recognize the LRT better, and I also see that you have a bike wreck in the basement.
Yep.
So I, I think, again, I think just a typical TDM approach is that as long as, like, there's a program to help tenants to understand the limitation of parking and that the other transportation programs available. I think for this location, that should, that will work out, and you're providing at least one space for apartment. So I recognize this stat. Aside from that, I have two questions. So one on the trees, street trees, will you be able to tell me where on the site map, site plan that, that they will be planted?
So those would be installed in the sidewalk area along Marshall Street?
I see. So they, you will have to cut, cut the concrete and then put a plant?
Correct, yep.
I see.
And that's actually DCR that does that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They'll do the, they'll do the planting of the trees, and we're agreeing to maintain if they plant.
I see. And, well, I mean, it's not that wide, but are there enough width for, for them? them?
It's a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
So they would have essentially two feet to get the tree in, if they deem to put it in. And they would also have to get approval from the Department of Public Works for that as well.
Have you, have you started conversation with them yet?
We have not. It came up during the original planning board approval for the condominium units. It comes up as a comment for just about every project right now. And we've always been agreeable to incorporate trees that DCR would want to incorporate into the city, into the plans or the conditions of the approval.
Okay. So that's what DPD staff requested, correct?
It was just, yeah, it was a recommendation that it's available. We accept that as, as something that we can incorporate into the site if we, if we can, yeah.
So Dennis McCarthy, one of the members of the ZBA, has been in contact with a representative of DCR and has offered, you know, made Dennis aware that there are this option where the DCR will come in and plant trees as long as the, you know, the applicant or the owner maintains the trees. So Dennis's suggestion was that we agreed to contact DCR and request that we, that they plant the trees and we maintain them. So makes perfect sense to us. We're happy to do it. So once we get through this process, Leo will reach out to DCR. Dennis has provided us the contact information, and we'll try to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. And one more concern, I think, good to have the, have the car alarm buzzer thing. But I think that one, you probably need to work with neighbors and make sure you don't bust them during evening time. I mean, in downtown Boston, that's fine, but like, you only have that wide of a street. And so I've, the volume of the buzzer to, I think those are fine details that you might, I mean, it's engineering detail and probably beyond the, you know, our review, scope of our review. But I think that will be a sensitivity issue to work with the neighbors.
And the sound can be controlled, and we, you know, the onsite management will help that tremendously.
Okay, great. Otherwise, I think it's great use of tight spot. And, and I think lastly, is the neighbors concerned if there are any way that you can help, like, alleviate those construction impacts. And understanding those will be temporary. So that will be important. So that's all the comments I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Caleb. Mr. Vichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a good example when you have, in a designated neighborhood business district before that, you know, when we looked at different areas in the city. But it really is a commercial-looking building, and a butch residential. So this is really a nice improvement from, visually from what's there.
Right. It's an unsightly building right now.
Do you have this, so they can just, I don't know if anybody's watching, but you could bring this up, the actual renderings? Like, just curious if you had.
You know, I don't know if Serena can do that.
Serena, is that something you can bring up, just these?
The rendering.
Right here, the...
Architectural?
Architectural rendering. Not the...
Just the exterior building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming this is reflective of the, the change in texture to a material. This is how it's going to appear.
Exactly.
And I was thinking, the beauty of today's knowledge is, I'm assuming the trees that DCR select won't be, have large root systems that will...
Would hope not.
I'm thinking of the planning board that'll sit here 30 years from now, that'll be having a tree haring to remove the trees.
Right.
Oh, there we go. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, what an improvement. I almost wish you had a, actually, I have pictures of what the, what the building looks like right now. That's a huge improvement visually, even for the condos that are in there. That's just going to complement that whole, that whole site based on what's there right now.
It really is. And it will likely spur other development in the neighborhood.
Yep.
And it's very interesting that it's townhouse on top of, but...
Yeah.
Idea. It's always in the sky.
No, definitely an improvement. There's no question about that. I do, again, a question on the trees, though. It's great that this particular owner agrees to maintain the trees. How is that maintained if he sells the building? Is there, is that, how is that captured somewhere?
There's a homeowners' association document for the entire development, and that would be incorporated into that homeowners' association document.
Did the deputy, was that a condition of the ZBA?
No, the condition for the ZBA was that, that this owner agreed to maintain the trees if they're planted, which he will do. If, you know, your question is if he sells the property, what happens? That wasn't discussed. It, you know, it would be unusual to see something like that in, you know, referenced in a title, I would suggest. So it wasn't discussed. But it's, I mean, you know, trees like that probably require maintenance once every year and a half or so.
Oh, I understand. But there's a reason why the city doesn't want to take the burden on, you know, that's, that's the whole purpose of it.
And we're happy to condition it upon, you know, you know, perpetual maintenance of the trees. And so that, that decision would be in the title chain to the property.
Nobody looks at that, Counselor.
I do.
Sounds good, though. Oh, you understand why I'm...
I offer a suggestion. Yes, I do.
Okay. We'll, we'll come back to that. I sort of think of the best way to address that, if, if there's a way we can address it. I think, you know, the conditions, the snow storage, you agreed to removal of the snow, private trash, internal. We've got the sweat path analysis. A question when you're going all-electric, I was just curious, just curious where it's, you have the indoor parking garages. Any thought of having, whatever you want to call it, charging units for possible electric cars inside there?
Yeah, absolutely. It can easily be incorporated.
I mean, I'm not making it as a condition. I just, it was interesting when you're looking at zero carbon footprint, you're going all-electric, and that would just be a perfect opportunity. And they would be, you know, safe inside the building as far as anything happening to them.
Right. It can definitely be, I will be, once this process is done, my electric engineer will start designing the building. And I, we can pursue those options, not only in the garage, but even upstairs, there's an opportunity for a plug-in spot there of units connected to the building. It's actually a great suggestion as well.
Yeah. No, I thought that would be an interesting, especially where, again, you were highlighting the fact that you're all-electric.
Right, absolutely.
Interesting, yeah, okay.
Just to follow up on that, if I may. So would you have a backup system if you lose electric power? So the garage door, you're going to talk up and down?
No, currently, no. Currently, I don't. But if, if you have a gas furnace, if you lose power, you're, you know...
So I mean, so you, I mean, for the garage door? I mean, you're saying you have all-electric?
Oh, for the garage door. I'm sorry, yes.
So would you have, like, a generator backup?
Correct. There will be a battery-operated backup system, you know, being that is actually one of the, could be used as one of the means of egress as well.
Right, yeah.
As one of...
I know the regular standard ones, like I have in mind, you've got to pull the chain down, then go manually pull it out if that power's not working. But you'd have a backup generator, though.
Correct.
The cars could still get in and out.
Yeah.
After winter storm, okay.
Correct.
If he was mentioning the garage door, I, we're thinking of that. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, Counselor, I do like the idea, and I know it's a small, small area, so it wouldn't really evolve that much, but really working with DPD and providing a final landscape plan, you know, I'm always in awe. I spend a lot of time in Newburyport. And people have, I don't know, 600 square feet, and they make it look so nice versus, you know, somebody that has 7,000 square feet in some communities, and it just looks awful. And it's amazing what you can do with small, even, even boxes, window boxes. And I mean, it's just amazing what can be done. So if you could work with, with just on that.
We can definitely work with DPD to come up with what, the best use of that space that we have. It's not a lot of space, but...
Right, understood.
We can certainly work with them as a condition of approval to make the most...
I think they could, they could help in even what could be done there.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, they have plenty of good suggestions.
And they could have some ideas as well as those, the trees you talked about on Marshall Street, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, their thoughts as well might be beneficial.
And then you're doing the private trash pickup. I will, more, this is not for this project, but Serena, if it's something we could follow up with, when I was visiting the site, Matt, I know you were the architect on those condos. Architecturally, they look nice, but I think we failed on the, the trash units we had built up front, in the front of the buildings. And first of all, there's no door, it looks awful, you can see the trash. I happened to be speaking to a very nice person that lives in one of those units. And apparently, and I, actually, if we could look into what the approval was from the board, believe there's some, shall we say, misunderstanding as to how the trash would be picked up. The city is saying, because it's so many units, that they don't pick it up. But supposedly, it was represented that it was part of the approval, that it would be city pick, city trash. And, you know, I was just looking at those, those units in the front. Now, because it was a great idea, I think, as we sat here in the board. But I've got pictures, and I think architecturally, those units look nice. They look really nice. But those trash units in the front. So that's just more, if we could follow up on that, Serena, I, I swear I'll go knocking on the gentleman's door to give him an answer anyways. I felt bad as to that, that kind of a dilemma at the moment over there. All right, this Chairman, I think it's, you know, I think there, you know, we've talked about the parking, I think, the location to the Gallagher Terminal. I have not looked at that recently with the development over there. It does, the availability really fluctuates based on, you know, during the day, weekends, if there's hockey season, basketball season at night. But there's a lot of open space on the upper levels of that. I've got pictures of my car there, and it, I'm the only, it's the only vehicle up on that parking.
Tremendous amount of open, open parking at that garage. And the, the administration, the LRTA, you know, acknowledges that.
Right, right.
That's why they're willing to work with us to an extent, but they are, you know, they're a commuter garage, so they have their own obligations they need to look after.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. And I do believe, again, the, the nature of the units, I think, as Caleb pointed out, you do have one parking space at the very least per unit.
Correct.
And I think that, I think that will suffice in many cases here, so. And I would just echo what, and I understand, and I think Matt Hammer pointed out, and I think it was, I'm glad he did point out, the amount of site work that had to take place on those condos versus what is required for this project, completely different.
Yeah, all the site work's essentially done.
Yeah, yeah. So I can understand, there must have been a tremendous amount of disruption there during that, that project. So, but I would, and as you've indicated, I would just obviously be sensitive to, to that, to the extent that you have to get the job done, too. The quicker you can get in and out, the, the, the sooner they, everybody can get back to living peacefully. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Melovich, any questions? Bob?
I think most of my questions, if not all, have been satisfied. I think it's a good project. I think we should move ahead with it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we, the request here is for, we need two motions. One will be for a decide plan, the other one for a special permit.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask the applicant one, one more time, though?
Sure.
Have you had a, I half noticed a little sidebar. Is there some thought as to...
Well, there's a question of whether or not the condominium documents would, would be a way to enforce that. And I, I can't answer that question right now.
Okay.
For the tree?
Excuse me?
For the tree, huh?
Yeah.
On Marshall Street?
Perpetual maintenance of the tree by the association if...
So can I, I want to understand the association, and the, so the, these units are going to be apartments or...
Is it going to be rental apartments? They're not going to be condominiumized or sold?
But are they part of a larger...
No.
Okay, so how...
They're not. So 14 McIntyre is separate from the condominiums. But they, they're across easements, as, as the comments suggested, and as I suggested in my presentation, that define the relationship between the two properties. So, for example, 14 McIntyre has its drainage on the condominium lot. The condominium lot has access through 14 McIntyre to get to their sites, and they also have three parking spaces on our site.
Right.
So that's the purpose of those easements, to define what's going on on the site.
Right.
But to the best of my knowledge, the lots are separate.
So really...
And they were subdivided separately. Matt, is that...
Yeah, they were, the, the lots were subdivided.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a condominium master D document for the six condos. And there are the cross easements in order for all the utilities in the access.
Yeah, it would be pretty tough to condition, I mean, that's already sold, and that's separate.
I think Attorney Gary, the easiest way is whatever's associated with the permits for the building...
Right.
Run with the building itself. And it's separate from the other condominium buildings that are currently there.
Yeah. I think that's probably the best we can do.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's lame at best, but at least, yeah.
I don't disagree.
I, 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 I don't like, I don't like non-conditioned conditions. And for years, I walked away as a resident thinking, ooh, we've got to address that to board.
Yeah.
So, okay, no, that's fair enough. I can appreciate that. All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions: incorporate the, the conditions issued by the zoning board of appeals, require that the applicant remove the snow off-site when the site cannot, no longer handle the, the snowfall. The applicant will have private trash and recycle bins within the interior of the building. The applicant will submit a final landscape plan to be approved by apartment planning and development. And I would just, and then Counselor, if you could, I guess I would add that to the condition of the trees. At the very least, we can add that on if somebody really wants to delve into it and say, hey, this is part of the approval. I think at least that would help, especially if it becomes a controversy with the city at some point, where the whole idea was...
Yeah, the city would have the ability to enforce it.
Exactly. They, they would dig a little bit more than, say, you know...
Can agree to that.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for the site plan?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved. So now we need a motion for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating all of the conditions issued with the site plan.
We have a motion by Mr. Vichette for the special permit with the same conditions as outlined in the site plan approval. Do we have a second on that matter?
I'll second again.
Mr. Lockhart, second the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Most motions have approved, and matter is approved. Good luck. Wish you...
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Be right back.
Sure. So Matt, on the, because the two trees, what are they talking, just the two trees on Marshall?
Honestly, that's...
Because I'm just thinking, you know, work with DPD on it, if they feel it's not necessary.
Yeah, I mean, what are you going to get out of them? You know what I'm saying? Yeah. So I mean, that's why I'm thinking, you work with landscaping, planning, with the plan, plan development. Yeah. And if they look at it and say, I don't think it's that necessary, then, yeah, you know what I mean? I mean, yeah. Because you have no place inside, right? So you figure, I understand the idea of looking outside, but it...
Yeah. It'd be amazing where you could do the roof nights. I mean, it just became a two...
So you might be able to put the, one or two there to satisfy the landscaping plan and...
Seriously. Seriously. I'll take you down there when we get... You know, Matt, this would have been perfect for rooftop shots.
Yeah.
What an idea.
For what?
For rooftop back.
Oh.
Really?
Oh, we can put solar panels on it.
Yeah, because visually, you wouldn't see it.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it.
Yeah. What a swing and a miss that was, isn't that awful?
Oh, and then I, I haven't thought about, they, they also put it as like-
Yeah, right there, doesn't that look awful?
Like, right next to it, the wall, so-
I mean, I like the way they, that they came out the facade, right?
Yeah.
I like that, and then this is just awful.
Yeah, the, I mean, I mean, there is no space that they would, I mean, the only way that you put it on the roof.
Yeah.
But, uh, so that might, that's worth thinking.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, one of the things we had talked about with the slope was, because it was to try to, you have the side shaft, right? Yeah, right here, because see, this kind of cuts off the back of the, is, we were hoping maybe, you know, so that way you could take the trash bins and put them out here.
Oh, yeah.
Hope it never, you know, it's like, oh, this would be the solution, because it was-
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a-
They wanted to have their, the side entrance, you know, the entrance.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it looks awful, you know, with the open front, you can see the trash.
Okay, can they put up a door maybe?
I know, I know, I mean, it wasn't part of this.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, the guy was very nice, you know, and he said, gee, you know, it's like, I'm looking out, you know, yeah.
At a spring door or something, at least, but who, who pick up the trash now?
I guess they, 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 they have to get a private, uh-
Yeah.
Because of the city saying, oh, no.
I mean, they would think that is a shore.
She doesn't have, she, she's alone with them.
It's not a secret conversation.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter we have is a special permit extension, the request on 246 dot one Market Street, the applicant is seeking an extension for a special permit to convert the existing mill building into residences, the original approvals were issued on June 18th, 2020, uh, I know we received a letter from attorney Catherine Flood, Serena, is she on Zoom? I don't see her present today here.
No, Mr. Chairman, Catherine, um, basically couldn't make it this evening, so, um, she said it would be okay if I, uh, attended.
Sure, say your name please, I'm sorry?
Uh, my name is Steve Monahan, uh, one of the principals for Emerson 100.
Okay.
That owns a property.
So you're here on behalf of Market Street?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I know we, you see the letter from the city engineer, he said he had no objections or no comment, um, I know this is a project that we approved, I have no objections to the continuance for two-year period, any of the board members have any comments? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, special permit extension for another two-year period.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made in the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any in opposition? Hearing none, the extension is allowed, good luck, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you very much. Uh, next matter we have is a pre-application discussion from 113 Walker Street, J.J.N. Realty Trust has applied to Lowell Planting Board for a pre-application discussion, the applicant seeks to demolish the existing structure and construct two buildings with a total of nine housing units, the subject property is located in a traditional neighborhood, multifamily zoning district, the applicant, the applicant would require a special permit from the Lowell Planting Board under Article 12 to construct more than three units on one lot, when we hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Chairman Linehan, gentlemen, Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, I represent J.J.N. Realty Trust, John Norton, the trustee, was here with us this evening, first of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you just for some, uh, discussion about this, uh, what we think is an exciting new, new proposal, you may remember this address, uh, because about two years ago, this board granted a, a site plan and, uh, special permit, uh, site plan review and a special permit, uh, for the development of this piece of, of property, um, and I believe the, um, the applicant was in here just recently for an extension on that, uh, just last month. The reason, I guess, that he didn't go forward on it was because he was trying to better, uh, the proposal, uh, which is unusual, uh, clearly he's got a permit, he can go and develop that and, and, and put, uh, four duplexes in over there for eight units, as you, as you already said, Mr. Chairman, um, he got to know the neighbors a little better, particularly the, his, the director bud up, which he, Pat Knott, and, um, worked with him and, and tried to come up with a better plan, and he think he had, he think, he thinks that he has, and we're here just to get your feedback, uh, clearly we understand that if, if this board, uh, looks favorably on this in a general sense, we don't have any real details yet, then we would, uh, submit a, um, a new application for a special permit and, and I believe site plan, uh, review. Um, as you can see from, uh, the memo dated, uh, I believe it's August the 4th, from the DPD staff, uh, this is a very, very strong memo in support of the new, uh, of the new line, the new suggestions that, uh, Mr. Norton is making, again, favored by the neighborhood, um, uh, better for trash, better for parking, in fact, as you'll note from the, the August 4th memo, uh, DPD suggests that they reduce the number of parking, I know you people don't hear that too often, but, uh, reduce the number of parking spaces, uh, there's more snow storage, uh, trash is better screened, better setbacks from the neighbors, uh, the building coverage on the proposed, uh, plan would be, uh, around 13%, building coverage on the approved plan around 19%. Uh, so, um, I know that you have a, I believe that you have a, a packet that was submitted with this, uh, kind of outlining, uh, Mr. Norton's proposal, and, uh, obviously, again, if this board seems to look favorably upon this, then we will start the whole new process for, uh, for this approval. Um, we, uh, kind of excited about it, I think it fits better in the neighborhood, certainly DPD thinks that, at least the staff over there, and, uh, we're interested in your comments, and, uh, knowing that, uh, that this is just a, a discussion this evening, we will start a formal process, um, assuming that, uh, you, you gentlemen look on this in somewhat favorable light.
Well, I, I know your applicant was here just the last month and, um, looking for an extension, which we had no problem granting, and he mentioned that he was thinking about maybe coming back, and we suggested he get to speak with DPD and see if they had any suggestions for him, excuse me, and the only thing that he knew is that they had a, um, letter saying that it could be a street, um, mortuary and once they start paving up there, so I know time is kind of, um, in his ballpark which way he was gonna proceed on it, and they didn't want to get caught behind the, um, paving of the, um, street. Um, I mean, the way I look at it personally is if, if it can better what we did before, I never have an objection, many projects takes better, um, I'm always of the mindset, if we approve something and somebody comes in later and wants to change something for the betterment of the project, I'm always in, um, willing to listen, um, you know, some projects we've approved, then they come back in, they want amendment, and sometime we find out the amendments are good, uh, obviously, if your client's out, and spoke with all the neighbors, and they're much happy with it, um, the design looks good, um, it seems to fit pretty much in the neighborhood there, um, the way all the buildings are there, um, and, so, I mean, traditionally, I mean, I know, like I said, he already has an approval, now to come back at a pre-app, you're like, well, but I know he still has his approval and the other-
It's unusual, I, I think, Mr. Chairman.
You know, so, uh, but, um, if, if, you know, I mean, DPD doesn't seem to have any problem with that, if that makes the neighbors happy and he's willing to go forward on this, uh, I'd look forward to the matter coming, um, before us for a public hearing, um, but, um, I, that's all I have to say, this matter, any other board members have any comments?
I have, I think it's an improvement as well, it really, you know, works, there's only one question I have, it's item number seven on that memorandum that you referenced, um, talks about the fire department.
Right, we, we totally agree with, with DPD that, uh, the fire department would like this plan better, because, uh, uh, a couple, a couple of reasons, uh, one was that the buildings were brought closer to the street, I believe, and, um, I think there's better access for, for emergency vehicles under this plan, uh, as, as we stated, uh, there's more than sufficient parking proposed, uh, and, um, just kind of shows that there's more room, more room to maneuver, uh, around these, uh, these structures, so, we, we agree with, with DPD on that, 100%, we think the fire department will, will like this much better, because there were some concerns, uh, you may, it's two years ago, I understand you guys see a lot of different, different applications, but there were some concerns with the fire department, and, uh, I, I think those concerns will be alleviated on, under this new proposal.
I mean, yeah, because the fire department, obviously, whether it's site plan or special permit, um, comes down to us as safety, and so there is a high concern, as you know, council, I mean, we rely heavily on the fire department for safety, that's, well, I look at, that's their project, whatever they recommend.
Of course.
You know, anybody comes before us faithfully knows that, that we pretty much go along with the fire department, I mean-
Right.
Um, we hate to not to then see a negative impact later, real bad negative impact, yeah, so, I mean, with the more space, I mean, and I like additional parking, I mean, you know, especially when, uh, you know, let's face it, people have guests, you know, and if not, um, when I was a kid, we used to play street hockey in, in people's driveways, I mean, you know, but, so, it's also uses open space, so, um, whenever people say there's too much parking, I'm thinking, well, that's not a bad thing, you know, so, any of the board members comments, or?
I, I don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, uh, I mean, it's, he already has his approvals and, uh, talked to the neighbors and, uh, willing to come back and come up with something that, uh, I think is an improvement on, on what the original project was, so I, so I, I would look forward to seeing the, uh, final plans presented.
We'll get, we're gonna get Matt on that right away.
Any questions, Caleb?
Uh, I think, I think, as Mr. Vichette would usually say, I'll, I'll also look for a landscaping plan.
Of course.
Now you have more, more open space to work with, um, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I am receptive of, uh, working with neighbors and, um, trying to make a, a better designed housing opportunity.
Mr. Malovich, any questions, comments?
Uh, my only comment is a better pro- proposal than what they have approved right now, and I think there's no reason why they can't go ahead with, uh, a submission of a plan.
Okay, so I think you got our comments, um, so hopefully-
Great.
Things will, uh, work out for the better.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll, uh, look forward to seeing you soon.
Yep.
As always, we want to thank DPD staff for all the help on this, they've, uh, they're really, they're really very, very, very good, I know you guys know that, but, uh-
We always like to hear good comments for staff, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, moving along on the agenda, any of the board members have any comments or follow-ups?
I just have a-
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good night, council.
A good evening.
Uh, the historic board didn't meet two weeks ago, there's no public hearings or anything, and our next meeting is September 12th.
Okay. Anybody else have any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, if, I don't know if you saw the article in the newspaper, but the new executive director of NEMCOG, did have a meeting with, uh, Tom Golden and, uh-
I saw that, yeah.
Christine McCall, I happened to be there as well, and trying, flying under the radar as, as wanted to, and, uh, it was actually a very productive meeting, and, uh, I believe she's looking to do that with all of the community, the NEM, the nine NEMCOG communities, and reaching out and wanting to know how NEMCOG can help, what are some of the needs, uh, and I thought it was a very productive, uh, productive meeting, so, um, hopefully, uh, I look forward to, uh, um, more, I think, more opportunities coming out of NEMCOG to address some of the regional issues, so.
Thank you. Any, any other board comments, if not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, mo.
Motion's moved in second by Mr. Malovich, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes, any opposition, hearing none, the motion carries, we have adjourned, and good night, and thank you everyone, have a good night, everybody, thank you.